Here we are. Make sure my friend's off. And then I get alerted saying that we're... See the applicant? I don't see the applicant.
Where?
Where you looking for him? Are we live, am I correct? Okay, here we go. Let's call this meeting to order. And no call. Derek, Mimi, Tim, Jeff, and David. We do have a quorum. Let's have the pledge of...
Pledge...
Just a lead to the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call to the public. This is a business meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the commission as a whole and not individual. Commission members do not address staff or members of the audience. Commission action and items brought up in call to the public is limited to the open meeting law. Commission may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda will not be heard or discussed in call to the public. Individuals are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone here to speak in the public? Being none, we'll move to item C1. Consider approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission held back on August 14th, 2025.
I make a motion, Jack. Do we accept the minutes from the August 14th meeting?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We accept the minutes as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. New business. Item D. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the chairman and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each item. Agenda item before or after the commission discussion. Questions from commission members however, directed to staff or a member of the public through the chairman at any time. Item D1. Public hearing, discussion and consideration regarding conditional use permit, CUP-135. Applicant to allow up to two horses on APN 311-29-025. Community development.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm not the community development director. I'm here in place of Jeremiah this evening. I'm serving as the interim town manager. Repeat again, as I did last month, not here in my other capacity as a Planning and Zoning Commission member. I'm, I was appointed interim town manager and assisting Jeremiah in this role tonight. The applicant, as you've mentioned, is Don Taylor and Todd Karchner. This is for a conditional use permit, allowing the applicant to stable up to two horses on a little under one acre of land located at 3250 West Coyote Drive in Lakeside. The APN number is 212-15009U. Property is zoned C1, which is a commercial zoning district, situated right on the busiest highway that you'll find in the area. I mean, I, this time of year, obviously with the, with the visitors, that roadway is extremely busy. The applicant actually started this activity on this property without zoning approval. Does not have a business license. And we have issued letters, non-compliance letters and so forth to the applicant. And I think at one point, perhaps before I got here, I think he came into a council meeting and thought that he, you know, was given approval of a conditional use permit. He never made an application. We told him that if he wanted to, he could. We suggested to him that his request would be a difficult one because of the nature of the business along the state highway and the traffic that's involved there. I think Jeremiah even went as far as suggesting if he wanted to have his application fee returned, that staff was going to recommend denial of this conditional use permit because it's just an inappropriate location. In Jeremiah's investigations, he also learned that the United States Forest Service limits the number of commercial stables in the area and they've issued all the permits for stables in this area. Those stables are in locations that are much more appropriate with more horses. And I believe the United States Forest Service is also going to go after this applicant to issue a cease and desist order. Tonight, just simply our recommendation is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the request for this conditional use permit. It's just not the right location to house horses on this property. This owner lost a dog, I think, on the property, you know, out into the traffic. And I know that there's been other, one other occasion, maybe one, maybe more, of a horse being hit by vehicles on the highway. Not a safe place to bring stabled horses in a small commercial piece across a state highway to ride over in the Woodland Lake Park area. And so we are recommending for your denial of this request this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Is there, is the applicant here or anyone that would want to speak on their behalf?
I don't, I, I don't, he's not here. And I think Jeremiah received a phone call or...
Called him yesterday.
Called him yesterday to remind him and he said he wasn't going to be here?
He was.
Oh, he wasn't going to be here, okay. So he reminded him. He is renting, leasing this property. The property owner, I believe, will ultimately be responsible if this operation does not cease. The owner will be issued a violation notice. He is the responsible property owner as well as the applicant who is leasing this space. Zoe's Adventures, they may have other activities that they can do on that property. It's not about that. It's about the horses that are being housed on this commercial piece. He needs to cease that part of the business. And if he wants to continue to do a business as Zoe's Adventure doing other things out of that space, he would have to come in and get a town business license as well, which he's not done yet.
What are the other, the other things that he's offering?
You know, I, I, I know that the horse back riding is primary. I really have not gone over there to find out what are other activities he's doing. But what I see are horses in a little area that he's kind of created a stable. And, you know, if he were here, he could answer that for you, but he's not here to answer that.
Yeah, it looks like he has the back area back there too, does he? Behind it?
I believe he goes all the way back to the alleyway, yes.
You know, if I may, Chairman, you know, I'm sad to see that he's not here because I went and toured the facility and I love the optics of having horses in town, you know, it kind of brings a Wild West feel. However, this isn't the Wild, Wild West and we need to not do this ask for forgiveness thing. And it seems like every step of the way, he has not even attempted to comply. You know, as much as I would love to see something like that, I mean, I kind of like the location notwithstanding, of course, the high traffic and animals getting hit and people put in danger, that, that part doesn't jive, but it's kind of cool to see, but...
I didn't know they were allowed horses in Woodland Park.
I don't believe there are any restrictions at the present time. You know, I think there's been concern expressed about horses that are out there on the trail system, which is actually owned by the United States Forest Service. And we do have a portion of the park that's more active recreation area. But I think a lot of people are complaining about the horse droppings and other things on the trails, worried about the trail itself.
Sign actually says horses are not allowed, but people ride them anyway.
Okay, I don't know that we're actually, as, you know, we aren't to enforce that. That's Forest Service property.
It's Forest Service property, you know, it's a Forest Service sign that's just there.
So is he riding, sorry, is he riding in woodland or in the area behind woodland or the area behind in the forest on that east side of the road?
You know, I can't answer where there have been riding the horses. I went out one day and saw two horses with one rider riding backwards on a horse and the one behind riding forwards. So I, and they were right along the road, Woodland Road, in the ditch. I've not personally seen these horses out in other areas. We have had complaints that they are on the Forest Service trails and other trails, but I, I don't see them out a lot. I'm not really looking for them. Perhaps was this our applicant?
Doesn't the horse droppings in town violate the city's nuisance law?
Pardon?
I believe the droppings in town violates the town's nuisance law.
I suspect that there would probably be some requirement to make sure that you're keeping those things picked up. And I see a lot of people picking up after their dogs and other things, but I suspect that that probably is accurate.
Do we have any feedback from either business around it?
I've not heard of any. I don't know, Jeremiah didn't bring any of that to my attention. I would compliment the, actually the owner and the applicant for the cleanliness of the business. It looks nice. I think Commissioner Wesley just mentioned, it does look nice, it's attractive, they've done a lot of work out there. You know, it's, that's a very positive thing. But the, but the horses being on that small property is really not appropriate.
But we can't override the United States Forest Service anyways.
Chairman?
It has nothing to do with the application.
Yeah.
I believe the applicant is here, if you'd like to call him.
Let's hold up our discussion right now. Are you the applicant?
Yes, I am.
Do you want to address the commission?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I love it. So my name is Todd. And we are Zoe's Adventures. I can tell you that we have totally eliminated crack addicts, meth addicts, the people that are going on over at the Zoe's Adventures, which you do all know what's going on prior to me being on that property, right? So it's a vacant property that was happening over there, right? We all know that, right? Vacant property for eight years. We took that property, that's $60,000, to improve that property, not only did we improve that property, but we have painted these properties down the street, which improved at Pinetop. So what I want to tell you today is that we give autistic kids rights in the back. We give an incredible value to the city of Pinetop. Okay? I want to be a part of the, the business community of Pinetop. There's no doubt. Okay? So what I can tell you today is that the horses that are involved there, we are, we have a, we have a, what can I say? We had another evaluation of the property. It is 0.88 acres, right? So we had another evaluation of that property at 0.945 acres. So we are less than our round pin that is there now. Half that size. And that's what the issue is, right? We want a permit to have horses there. Two horses on that property. We have, I cannot say this enough, that we have improved that property beyond belief. So first thing I want to ask all, all the council here is that, did you see the property before we started?
Yes.
Okay. It was horrible. It was vacant. We had crack addicts. We had meth addicts. We had people that were in trailers being beat, beat by people that were there saying, you know, I don't know. It was horrible. Okay? I rented the property from a gentleman that owns the Chevrons. He owns 17 businesses.
Okay.
Here. And not only does he own 17 businesses here, but he also owns, he also owns the Bell Gas Station that's down the street. It's a county-owned property. He also owns property in Holbrook. He has not done nothing, nothing to improve this property in Pinetop. I have invested $60,000 to improve this property to make this a very good business here. My intentions, my intentions here, I'm sorry, I'm very emotional about this because I invested a lot of money here to make this a good property. Everyone drives, everyone here on this council has driven by this property here and they have said, it's a piece of crap. Okay, guys? Everyone here knows that. So I've improved this. Okay? I've, I've invested my money, my time, my effort to make, to improve this for the town of Pinetop. On top of that, I have painted a Chinese restaurant. I have painted the, the property next to me. I've, I have painted the new place, the new Mexican food restaurant, El Charo, next to me. And I've made this, I, I, you know, I've made this, I have improved this area. Okay? So I have come to you today to ask you for a permit. I, I have got, I have paid for a, I have paid for, I'm sorry, I have paid for another evaluation on the property. You're, you're saying per Jeremiah, that is 0.88 square feet, which is under an acre. And you're, you're saying that I need an acre. So I have paid for another evaluation on the property. It is now per that evaluation of 0.945 acres. So we are just under an acre. So when you drive by every day, you will see that is half the size of my round pin to get approved for having horses on this property. I have been respectful. I have picked up horse shit, excuse me, on this property daily. I have had respectful people. I'm a respectful person. I want to do business with this community of the town of Pinetop. This is my life savings that I tell you today, period. I mean, I've invested every dollar I have to have this investment over here. It's that serious with me and I need...
Here's my question, okay?
Yes, sir.
You're asking for us to approve you, okay?
I, yeah.
But what are you doing with the US Forest Service? They won't approve you.
Excuse me, sir. So I knew that would come up. So I called the US Forest Service and I said, are we approved to have this investment? I do not have a permit to do that. That's his question. Okay? So what I've done is, can I not rent horses and have these people ride on horse trails? They're horse trails, sir. I rent horses to ride on horse trails.
I'm, I'm not asking you that.
No, you are.
No, no, I'm...
What are you asking me, sir?
What I'm asking you is...
Yes, sir.
The US Forest Service is, is giving or gave you a cease and desist order.
Okay, so that's per Jeremiah. So here's the deal. No, it's not a per system. Okay. So here's my answer to that. Am I not allowed to rent horses to ride on horse trails? Like, am I not allowed to ride, or, excuse me, am I allowed, like, people rent boats here? Can they not, can I not rent boats to have boats rent on lakes? Right? Can I not have horses that I rent ride on horse trails? Because that's what I do.
I, I understand, but you're, you're really, you're losing me on...
Okay, so let me, let me, let me...
Rick, let me, let me ask Mr. Miller a question here.
Yes, sir.
If we would approve him, can we override the United States Forest Service?
No, no, here's the deal.
Hold on, hold on, let me get his answer.
No, 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 it's not about, it's, so, so, sir, it's not about a horse...
Point of order here. We've got a question.
Go for it. I'm sorry, sir. It's very emotional to me. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yes, there is decorum that needs to be maintained in the, in this room.
Sure, sir.
The Planning and Zoning Commission is a volunteer commission, appointed by the mayor and council to enforce the zoning codes of the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
Yes, sir.
You're in violation of the zoning code because you started a operation and, and no one is being critical of the way you kept the property up and cleaned the property. That's not the issue.
Yep.
I think everybody is absolutely in agreement that you've done a very fine job of that.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, we turned it, we turned it into a meth, crack, homeless situation.
I could finish answering...
To a gentleman that...
Let me finish answering the question, sir.
I'm finished.
Just real quick, it's not about that. The question tonight before the Planning and Zoning Commission is, is your activity on this property an appropriate location for a public horse stable? You're renting out horses...
Yes, sir.
For people to ride.
Yes, sir.
My understanding, and I don't have all the rules and regulations of the United States Forest Service, but in talking with the planning director Jeremiah, who you've had multiple conversations with...
Jeremiah has been totally against us. He was totally for us.
Hold on, hold on. Let him finish.
My understanding is that the Forest Service only issues a certain number of...
No, it's...
Private stables.
My God, sir! It's not about the Forest Service.
It's about the...
Okay, listen, sir, please. Okay, I, 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 this is so emotional to me because, guys, on this council, I have invested my life savings.
That doesn't give you the right...
Here we go. Please. Okay, I've invested my life savings over at Zoe's Adventures. Now you're talking about the Forest Service, okay? Okay? We rent horses. Now you're telling me that we can't have, we can't rent horses to go on horse trails? Is that what you're telling me, sir?
That's not at all what I'm telling you.
No, no, no.
That's not at all what I'm telling you.
We are on horse trails. We are on horse trails. We rent horses. So you're telling me the people all up here that rent boats can't go on lakes and rent boats? Is that what you're telling me? We rent horses to go on horse trails. That's what we do. That's what we do. Period. We're all about, we are all about autistic kids, church groups. Okay? We all are about little kids coming in the backyard that want to ride on horses. We have two horses. There are 0.94 acres. We are half the size of our round pin in front of our place that you see. Half the size, sir!
Mr. Chairman, may I interject here? Thank you, we've heard...
Everything.
We've heard about the pins and the size and that kind of stuff.
No, it's half the size.
We, we absolutely don't need to go there again.
No.
So I'm looking at your permit here and it doesn't really state what you're precisely looking to...
Okay, so the town of Pinetop has issued, the town of Pinetop...
Sir, I won't be interrupted. We, we can, we can have a conversation where you speak and then I speak, but I won't be interrupted. Do you understand? Do we agree?
We agree.
Okay, great. Thank you. So when I toured your facility, I know you were talking about rides and, and I'm seeing potential because I really do like the facility.
Yeah, I, I, I met you there. You were very nice and...
The part, the part that I'm having a hard time with is that no, no steps were followed to comply with requirements. You don't have a business license now.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Did we agree?
You just said, excuse me, sir.
Did we agree?
You just said we don't have a business license.
Did we agree?
We do. We, we are, oh my God, sir.
So, so if...
Hold on, sir. We do have a business license. We've been licensed by the town of Pinetop to have horseback riding. That's number one. Two, we've kept the legal amount of horses that we have on the property, which is two. We are 0.94 short, which is half of the round pin that we have. We're like 12, we're like 1,200 square feet short of what we need. Now here's what we do to the value of Pinetop is this.
Mr. Todd?
No, sir, I want to finish.
Well, he hasn't finished. And maybe you could get my vote if you let him have, have his, his thought process go through. I'm willing to listen.
I, I totally get it.
But the thing is...
And let me tell you...
And you don't know what I'm saying? Let him, let him ask your questions.
Yeah. We do have a time limit. You're over your time. And, and we made an agreement and you violated that agreement, so my discussion with you is over.
So you can tell me that, so what you want to go back with, with the town of Pinetop, guys, the council, is you want to go back to meth? You want to go back to crack? You want to go back to trailers?
Todd?
No, let me finish. Can I finish, sir? You want to go back to crack, meth? You want to go back to trailers, being parked in the back there? You want to be going to people being beat by the woman that's there in the trailer? And now I've invested $60,000 into this community, into this community. Not only have I invested in this community, but I have, I have refurbished commercial properties here. And you're telling me now that, oh, be quiet, it's just the way it's going to be. I just want to tell you, with all respect to you beautiful people, because you are, I want to be a part of this community. I want to be a part of this community. I've invested my life savings to have two horses and I'm 0.94. I've had a, I've had a separate survey done on the property. It's 0, you originally said it's 0.88 square feet. No, you're wrong. It's 0.945. So we are half the size of my round pin in, over on my property, okay? Guys, we give autistic kids rights in the back. We give church groups. We give these very beautiful children that are in the back. And you're going to deny me of a permit that tells me I can't do that? And, and we've taken a property that was a crack, first of all, was vacant. First of all, you've seen...
Sir, I want to ask you, hold up for a minute. You're saying everything three or four times. I would like to have the commission ask you a few more questions.
Please, please ask me these questions.
If you will answer those straight, directly and don't repeat yourself.
Please.
Okay?
Please.
My question, oh, go ahead.
I'd like to start with Derek. Derek, you have a couple...
Please. Um, what do you... Um... I'm sorry, guys. Honestly, it's my life savings here, okay?
I, how can we, we trust that if, if the conditional use permit is issued after not obtaining it firsthand, that you'll continue to follow the rules of the town?
I've all, I've always followed the rules. Rick Buffington, the old zoning guy, he loves me. Jeremiah, I've been straightforward. Jeremiah, I've been straightforward with Jeremiah. I, all of you guys have toured the property. We are spot on. We respect this community. Not only that, is that when we do the horse trail rides, is that we clean up everything that we do. I love this community.
And how, how are we going to prevent horses from getting hit again?
Horses have the right of way, sir.
On the busiest street-
And she hit it. I, I know you know about that, too.
On the busiest street-
It's because horses have the right of way. So here's what we are going to do, is, one, secure our facility, which we always have.
What is your policy for that?
Our policy for that is just make it secure.
There has to be a policy or a procedure. What is your procedure?
Um, come visit us. I want-
That doesn't answer my question.
Well, okay, so here's what I want you to do, seriously. Come visit our facility. Please, please, look at us. I hired a blind guy, okay? I mean, I mean, I've hired these people that are autistic, that are blind, that, that want to work for me and are beautiful people. I want to be a part of this community. I have invested in this community. I have painted the, the, the commercial buildings. I have received a grant from the town of Pine Top, twenty-five hundred dollars. You know that, right, sir? You know that, right? Everybody knows that I have received a grant from the town of Pine Top. You guys know that, right? Do you guys know that?
How would I?
Wait a minute, let me speak. You have, I have received a twenty-five hundred dollar grant from the town of Pine Top. You know that, right? Does everybody know that on this council? Okay, look that up, sir. Contact Jeremiah. I'm just saying, I want to be a part of this beautiful community.
I've said that five times. I hate time now.
Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to.
Yeah, this, this is recursive.
Yes, can we move on?
Let's move on.
I think we need to-
Any other, I mean, I'm going to ask a couple more questions. Any more questions?
Yes, please.
I asked my question directly, and it wasn't answered.
Yes, please.
Okay. Can I ask any other last question?
I answered my, I asked my question to Mr. Miller, and he interrupted you. I never got the correct answer.
Let's-
What? Now, now, hold on. You let us talk, okay?
Yes, sir.
My question is-
Yes.
If we would give you approval-
Yes, sir.
-you still cannot operate because of the US National, or the-
No, no, we are not-
USFS.
Okay.
We're not-
They gave out the permission-
We are not riding on, we are not riding on land that is under control of the United, the Forest Service. We're not doing that.
Mr. Chairman?
We're not doing that.
To answer Commissioner's question here, we're not here worried about what the US Forest Service-
Yes, thank you. Thank you, sir.
We're not here to enforce their rules, or-
No.
But we are here to address the zoning question, and that is whether an-
Yes, sir.
-property is a, an appropriate location-
Thank you, sir.
-to stable two horses on a-
Yes, sir.
-commercial property on the major arterial roadway where we have had a history of horses getting hit, and our, our report adequately says this is not the location-
So, the horse getting hit-
For the planning, for, for this particular use on this extremely busy arterial roadway. We've had complaints about horses crossing the road. I don't know how it is going to end up with the woman who hit the horse, what kind of damage was done, what kind of injury was done to the horse, but I think that there's a, this is a recipe for disaster on this particular property. He's, he's, he's made a lot of great improvements. There's no, no-
Sir, sir, the horse, with all respect, I don't want to interrupt-
Hold on. When I order-
Tonight is very clear. What we recommend is really what we're going to stand by, and the Commission needs to make a decision on it.
So, so, sir, I just want to make a point, that lady who hit this horse was drunk.
Point of order.
Point of order. I'm asking for a motion.
I make a motion to deny.